Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, can we get a round of applause for everyone who's here this evening? It's a tough crowd. I do not envy the candidates. So, we want to thank you all for being here this evening. We're going to make sure that we have an impactful candidate forum. We thought it was very important for us to have this forum today because many times we hear out and about in the community that you have a number of residents who are not familiar with the individuals who are running. And so, we looked at it and said, hm, what can we do? Thought it would be a very good idea for us to actually have a candidate forum. And we have great partners here with us today. We have CDAD. If you give CDAD a round of applause. That's Latoya Morgan from CDAD. You have our man, how do you pronounce your last name?
Harachin.
Harachin from Excellent Schools Detroit. Give him a round of applause, please. We have Kathleen Newell from Moses. She's on her way here. She's not here yet, but give her a round of applause, Moses. And of course, we have District 1 as well, and I will be representing the district. Before we go any further, we want to make sure that we do things and set it off the right way by us being in a church. We want to make sure we begin with an invocation. And we will bring none other than the shepherd of this house, Reverend Pastor Isaac. Give him a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. As we do everything here, we begin with a word of prayer. So, let us pray. Our Lord and our God, we give you thanks for allowing us together here to be about the business of being community and seeing to it that we are properly organized and represented as this community. So, we pray for your leadership and your guidance as we meet with the candidates for these different offices. We ask that you bless each and every one of them. Teach them leadership and service and teach us, Lord, to be vigilant in the candidates that we select to represent us. All things we pray constantly and forever. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you can put your cell phones on stun, please, and not audio. And so, we really want you guys to understand that some of these candidates are out and they said, you know, I could be out knocking on doors, but they wanted to be here to ensure that they had an opportunity to have a conversation with you. And so, with that said, I would like for all of the candidates who are for the Wayne County Commission, if you can please come forward. All of you should have a packet in your hand. If you don't have a packet, please go back to that table that says registration, and it has a packet with all of this great information in it. It gives you information on each district and each candidate. So, just give you a little information about the Wayne County Commission. Wayne County Commission is the legislative branch of Wayne County Government. It's comprised of 15 districts throughout the county. Detroit is home to eight of those 15 precincts. Their role is to adopt the budget, approve contracts, appointments, and rules and enact ordinances. They are elected every two years, in even years, and the next election is in 2016. And so, we want to begin this round of questioning. Just give you some of the rules. We're going to have, every candidate will have 30 seconds to respond to each question. And it doesn't seem like a lot, but if I were to take 30 seconds as a pause right now, you'd go, come on, keep talking, come on, come on. So, we have 30 seconds per question, but before we begin, we want to allow each candidate to have a one-minute introduction. We have a gentleman by the name of Rod Liggins. Many of you probably seen, know, and love him. I do. And he has a sign, and he's going to keep you on track and keep me on track as well. Rod, raise your hand. So, he has a 30 second. He has a 15 second. He has a five second, and then the dreaded "time's up." Please, candidates, adhere to all of those time cues. Wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to do that, all right? So, without further ado, we would like for Commissioner Alicia Bell, please go forward.
My name is Wayne County Commissioner Alicia Bell, representing District 7. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you to Councilman Tate for having this forum. I think it's also very important that you get to know the candidates and the people that represent you in the various offices. My district goes from Telegraph to McGraw. It goes up to Dearborn on the south, and it goes over to 96 Linden Grand River on the north. I've been in office since 2003, and over the years, I've been able to secure tangible things for our district such as up to about almost a million dollars' worth of play equipment in various parks in my district, $500,000 to programs for our young people. It's very important that the county, as we do our mandated services, that we also try to do those things to help our senior citizens, our youth, and make sure that our residents have a quality of life that is deserving of those persons in Wayne County. And I've been able to do that over the last 14, well, almost 12 and a half years, actually. So, again, I entertain any questions as we get to that point. Thank you again for having us, and thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you. Mr. Rockmore.
Good evening, everybody.
I'm sorry.
First of all, my name is Ramon Patrick. I'm a candidate for Wayne County Commissioner, District 6. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I would thank Councilman Tate for holding this forum for us tonight. Again, my name is Ramon Patrick. My boundaries are 8 Mile to the north, Finkel to the south, Telegraph, Five Points to the west, and Myers to the east. I decided to run for Wayne County Commissioner for District 6 because I believe it's time for a change. We need economic development in our community. We need youth, we need jobs and job training programs. We need to get rid of our blight in our community, and we need transparency in our budget. We need transparency in our government as well. I think it's time that we can't keep doing the same things over and over and keep expecting a change. It's time for a change, and I'm here to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Monique Baker McCormick. I am also running for Wayne County Commissioner in District 6. I'd like to thank Councilman Tate, CDAD, Excellent School Detroit, and Moses for having this forum. And I would like to thank all of you for showing up. I am a veteran business owner of 17 years right here in the district. I'm raising my family here. I have two daughters that attend Detroit Public Schools. They go to Cass Tech. And I'm here to seek and ensure that we have the accountability and the ethics in Wayne County Government. I'm not here to talk about what the county executive is doing or has done, but it's the lack of what our commissioners are doing. And I believe that a commissioner needs to live here in order to know what our issues are. And so, that's what I'll be fighting for, accountability and ethics.
Thank you, Ms. Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Monique. I'm Burton Leland. I want to introduce my son, Gabe Leland, Councilman Gabe Leland, and my wife.
Commissioner, if you could just stay up there, please.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And my wife, Roseanne Leland, of 42 years. I have been an elected official in Detroit for 34 years. I'm the longest-serving elected official in Detroit, other than Congressman John Conyers. Every day I get up, I still have the passion, the respect, the love for my constituents as I have the day I got elected. I feel I've done my job for the last 34 years as a legislator. I spent 26 years in Lansing. I was your state representative and state senator. I appreciate the support and the love that I've gotten from my constituents over the years, and I do give back a whole lot to my community. I don't take my entire salary. I put a lot of that money back into our community. Over the years, I've given tens of thousands of dollars in scholarships. I see a couple of parents out here whose kids have gotten some of my scholarship dollars. In the summertime, we clean up parks. We cut grass. In the wintertime, we hire people to shovel snow. I like to say that I don't need the job. I just do the job.
Commissioner Leland, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We really appreciate you all adhering to those time guidelines. So, we'll, again, let you guys know how things are going to go. Every candidate is going to have four questions. And so, we will start with Ms. Latoya Morgan from CDAD.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. I just have one question for everybody. How will you and your staff be accessible to the community and respond to community issues?
So, we'll start with, who has the mic? Let's start with Commissioner Leland, and then we'll move down that way to the right.
Well, in terms of being responsive to community issues, I think we'd have to probably talk to some of my constituents out here. Over the years, when my constituents have contacted my office, I've always been very accessible and very visible. Just, you know, just by a show of hands, how many folks have contacted me over the years that I've been in office? And you folks that have contacted my office, have I been, have I done the job for you? Okay, so, I think that responds to your question. When there's an issue, I pick up the phone. My fingers aren't broken. I make house calls. I visit my constituents. I go to my meetings.
And time's up, sir. Thank you. We also want to remind folks that we do have comment cards, questions for anyone who has a question for the candidates. We will be having a lightning round after we have each and every one of the candidates or the panelists ask a question, okay? So, just raise your hand, and so, Monique will be able to provide you with that card. I'm sorry, ma'am. Go ahead, please, Ms. Baker McCormick.
As a business owner in the area and as one who has always been actively involved in the community, I am used to giving. I've given thousands of dollars and hours and time to my community without even having a seat. So, I will definitely be here for anything that you need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I currently have a business on 7 Mile and Southfield, and my campaign office is also on 7 Mile and Southfield. Now, once I plan on winning this race, my campaign office will turn into my district office, and I will be really accessible to everybody within my district. You won't just see me on senior days or during election time or just come around your church on election time. I'm going to be there every day. I'm not 75 miles away. I'm seven minutes away. So, I'll be here to call. Thank you.
I am accessible through myself. I attend all the community meetings in my district. I have a wonderful staff that is very attentive to the needs of the community of things I've done in the community. I've done a Bell the Ball Prom Dress giveaway for the last seven years. I have an annual picnic for all the families to come out, to see me, talk to me, and I give a legislative update. So, I think it's very important that you make sure that you're visible by attending the meetings in the community because everyone wants to know what's going on in your branch of government. And Wayne County Government, I do that as well as doing extra things to make sure that I'm accessible and visible in the community.
Thank you very much. We're going to have the second round of questions. Armon.
Great. Thanks for being here tonight and good evening. State Superintendent Mike Flanagan talked about consolidating non-instructional services like transportation and food, services for K-12 schools and early childhood programs at the county level. What, if any, role should the county government, Wayne County Government, have in K-12 education?
We're going to start with Commissioner Bell.
We have Wayne RISA, which is out county, and they do an excellent job in coordinating some services in that realm. When you have such a large metropolitan area like Detroit, we have Detroit Public Schools, which my children attend, which I think is wonderful, and they have their own responsibility per the state. So, I think everyone has their role, and they should play their role respectively and make sure that they're excellent in their role. So, should Wayne County have a more extensive role in education? What we do is fine with Wayne RISA, and we do not need to really necessarily expand what we're doing there because we're doing a great job there. DPS is doing their job where they are. So, I think that pretty much could answer your question is my response.
Mr. Patrick.
Yes, I think the school system, DPS needs to be an independent system by itself. DPS, for example, needs to be a school system independent by itself. Not saying that it's ran properly. I don't think our governor is running our school system properly, but I think it needs to stand independently by itself. And I think the county has enough issues trying to deal with what's going on right with its resources right now. So, I really don't approve of putting them together, but I do look for improvement with the school system.
I believe that Wayne County, like Ramon said, has its hands full with all of the issues that we're facing with the failed jail, and we can go on and on. But in saying that, I believe that that should be a standalone department. I sit on the board of Matrix Human Services, and we basically handle all of those, the same type of concerns that Wayne RISA. So, yes, I believe it should be standalone. Thank you.
I spent eight years in the state senate in the, on the Education Committee, Senate Education Committee, and I was a very strong supporter of consolidation. We have 535 school districts in Michigan. In fact, in Dearborn Heights, which was a community I represented for several years, we have three or four school districts within the city of Dearborn Heights, which has 57,000 people. That's ridiculous. The state of Hawaii has one school system for the whole state of Hawaii and all the islands. So, I think there ought to be some consolidation. 535 districts is absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you very much. And we will go now to Johnny Turnridge, who is filling in for Ms. Newell from Moses.
Good evening. What do you feel should be the budget priorities under your administration?
And we'll start with Ms. Baker McCormick.
First of all, we need to know where we stand, I think. I believe that we need a forensic audit in order to determine where we are in Wayne County. As we all know, Wayne County is facing a crisis right now. So, without really analyzing each department and knowing the real deal with the budget, it would be difficult to determine, so.
Mr. Patrick.
Well, right now, the county spends over $200 million in this justice system, $143 million in the Sheriff's Department, $36 million in the Prosecutor's Department, and only $12 million in economic development. I think we need our proportion to, we need our proportion in prevention. We don't just have to lock people up. We need to prevent people. We need to invest in our infrastructure. Wayne County had in 2008 at a $2.2 billion budget. Right now, I believe we're running a $1.5 billion budget, and I think we need our share inside of our district for redevelopment. Thank you.
Commissioner Bell.
We have a $1.5 billion budget, and I think many people would agree that public safety is one of the biggest issues in our area. So, making sure that we have a strong prosecutor's office and a strong sheriff's and jail is very important, I think, to the residents, and making sure that they're funded properly is also very important. So, I think if you ask what are my priorities, it's public safety. Then we also have to look at children and family services and what we're doing with our juveniles and with our children to make sure that we have preventative programs to keep them on the straight and narrow. And they're saying that my time is now up. Thank you.
And if you could pass it down to Commissioner Leland.
I'll take a positive approach here. We have a deficit elimination plan going on right now in the county. In the future, we're going to have increased tax dollars coming in because our property taxes are under the rise. The drop in population losses stabilized. The reason why Wayne County has the problem, and not just Wayne County, counties everywhere, tax dollars have been declining. The county is predicated on your taxes that you pay with your property taxes, and there's been a tremendous decline. When those property taxes go down, we have less dollars. We still have a safety net. The sky's not falling. Time's up.
Thank you so much. And for the last question, we're going to start with Mr. Patrick, and we're going to go to Commissioner Bell, and then go back down the other way. I have a question. What do you believe are the three most important issues facing residents in District 1, and how do you plan to address them? Now, everyone should have this document here that gives you the numbers of individuals who are listed, who reside in District 6 that overlays in District 1. It's 55,000-plus people. And in District 7, it's 82,000-plus individuals. So, what are the three main issues facing residents in District 1, and what can you do about it in your capacity as a commissioner?
Well, first of all, we need economic development, and we need jobs, 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 jobs. Once we provide our youth and our people in the district with jobs, that will resolve a lot of the crime, that will resolve a lot of the blight, and that will also increase our tax base. And we want to develop a walking district. We just don't want to talk about the grass is greener on the other side of 8 Mile. We want our grass to be just as green on this side, but we got tender on grass. So, we want to start investing inside the community, not just brick and mortar, but we want to invest in our individuals and job training programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bell.
Economic development is certainly something that's desperately needed in District 1 as well as jobs at the state. I think everyone can agree that jobs are one of the most important things in this whole region. So, jobs would be one. Making sure that our neighborhoods are stable is another thing. Unfortunately, with the things that have happened in the last five or six years with the housing crisis, many of our neighborhoods have fallen in disarray. So, to make sure that we have stabilized neighborhoods and then making sure that we have good quality recreation and things for our children to do as well. Programs that keep our children off the street and recreational things to make sure our children are doing things productive during the daytime and into the early evening so that they are not doing the things that people can get into once they don't have those types of opportunities. Thank you.
Time's up. Thank you.
I definitely say jobs, and one of the things that I'm looking at is partnering with Wayne County Community College with DPS and making sure that we use all of our vocational centers to train our young people so that they can go directly into jobs. And then, I will bring our commission meetings to the district because I think it's important for us to be educated in what's going on in Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leland.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, it's got to be public safety. You're not, if you don't have public safety, it's going to be difficult to get folks to come and bring their jobs here. And I want to say that Detroit is doing better in that job front. The council and the mayor are working well together. There seems to be a lot of economic activity going on. So, that is happening. Neighborhoods, obviously, very, very important. Cleaning up neighborhoods, keeping our parks running, cutting our grass, boarding up abandoned buildings, tearing down buildings. This is all happening, and with, time's up.
Thank you. And so, now, we're going to go into the lightning round. Lightning round are questions that we receive from the community. The way this goes is we'll ask a question, and whoever answers, raises their hand first, you're the one that gets to answer that particular question. We have two minutes total for this entire round, and we will begin with this first question. Question for the commission candidates. What will you do to get Finkel between Southfield and Evergreen paved? This roadway is bumpy and undrivable. I think I saw, Commissioner Bell? Commissioner Bell, your hand was up first. You still have 30 seconds.
A wonderful, and I'll speak for Commissioner Leland and myself. Just last week, Commissioner Leland and myself and Councilman Tate had a meeting with both the roadside of the aisle with both the city and the county to make sure that that issue was addressed. I know it's been a very sore spot for a very long time. We are actively working with the city road commission and the county to make sure that that area is addressed. So, what are we going to do? We're talking to the folks, making sure that the formula is changed because all the roads in the county have a rating system, and Finkel is actually on the lowest piece of that rating system. So, getting the road people together and demanding that that road area is paved is something that the three of us are actively working on as we speak. Thank you for that question.
Thank you. Mr. Rockmore just arrived. Thank you for being here. This question is actually geared to one particular candidate, and it is to Commissioner Leland. It says, "Issues surrounding your residency come under great public scrutiny. Is the bentler addressed your primary residence as defined by law, and why does this issue continue to plague your candidacy?"
Well, the issue continues to plague me because there really are no issues to attack Burton Leland. It's always been about the politics of personal destruction, my family. You know, after 34 years of being in this business, how many politicians do you know who have never had an issue with anything other than myself owning another piece of real estate? I spent 26 years in Lansing. I had a house here. I never sold the house. I still have it. There are moments where I'm there. There are moments I spend in West Bloomfield with my mother-in-law, who's 92, and a 95-year-old boyfriend. We shop, we cook, we clean. My wife is there all day today. You know, this is America. You can stay in a lot of places. I don't know how else to answer it. There are no other issues to attack Burton Leland other than I own a piece of real estate.
Thank you. All right, and that ends this particular round of questioning. We want to make sure that you have all of the information for the Wayne County Commission candidates. It's in this packet. Please do not just allow this to be the only time you communicate with these candidates. Use this information resource guide as being helpful for you as you make the decision moving forward, all right? We'd like to give each and every one of the candidates an applause, round of applause. And come on down. We now like to bring up forward now the candidates for House of Representatives, Districts 7 and 8. A House of Representatives, one of two of Michigan legislative bodies. There are 110 members elected in even-numbered years, and they serve two-year terms. I'd like to thank all the candidates for being here today. Very much appreciate your time. We'd also like to start, as we did before, with a one-minute introduction. We will follow the same rules as we did during the first round. Each candidate will have 30 seconds to respond to the questions from the panel, and then we'll have a two-minute lightning round where the first person who raises their hand gets the opportunity to answer that question. We'll begin with Ms. Stacy Pugh, representing State Representative, District 8.
Thank you, Councilman Tate. Good afternoon, everybody, or evening. How are you all today? Good. Councilman Tate, Reverend Isaac, thanks for having us today. My name is Stacy Pugh, and I am running for State Representative to represent District 8 up in Lansing. I'm running because we really need a representative that can go up to Lansing and get things done on the interest of the people. As I've been walking around the district, I've been talking with various neighbors, and we have issues with the pensions, with the education, with retaining residents in the state of Michigan and in Detroit, and our overall blight issue. And that's why, as the next state representative, I want to take my same hard work ethic that I've had in the community and go up to the state house to make sure that we have policies and funding that improve our overall quality of life through economic development, through jobs, through education funding at all levels, and making sure that our public safety is funded for police, fire, and EMS. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Coach Musen Mohammed, and I am running for State Rep, 8th District. My interest here today is to pass a message to those of us who are in the audience, and before I do, I want to say thank you to James Tate, your staff, and also to the Reverend for making this dwelling available for us. He's most certainly a foreleader in our community for providing us with information. I am interested in my platform. My number-one platform is public safety. Recently, I had a niece who was carjacked at Wendy's, and I think all of us in this room have experienced trauma of that nature. I recently talked to an official who was responsible for the scout program, and his number-one goal was something other than public safety. So, public safety is on the list, education, seniors, veterans, and other things of that nature in our community. I am dedicated. I've been dedicated for the last 30 years, and I will be dedicated in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hampton.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nicole Hampton. I'm running for State Representative, District 8. And I am running because I have a six-year-old little boy. I want a better Detroit and a better future for him. I'm born and raised in Detroit, graduated from Detroit Public Schools. I have a master's in public administration, a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Phi sorority Incorporated, where part of our principles are preserving the family. I've been a community leader for many years, hosting community meetings, block clubs, community gardens. My main focus is education, protecting the pensions, and safety for the communities.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Stallworth.
Good evening, everyone. Nicole Well-Stall, thank you. That's, thank you. That's good. Nicole Well-Stallworth, I'm a candidate for State Representative in the 7th House District. And I want to thank Councilmember Tate again for hosting this wonderful forum, as well as Moses, Excellent Schools Detroit, and CDAD. The reason that I'm running for public office is that, let me just give you a little bit of background about myself. I've been involved in children's and family initiatives over the last eight years with regards to K-12 budget and as well, children who experience behavioral health issues, children in the mental health system. So, these are the issues that I've been studying over the years. These are the issues in which I've been advocating for over the years, and it's my intention to take these issues, the things that I know about them, and to have a greater impact in Lansing. I care about the community, and I care about the future of the community in which I intend to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll begin this first round with Johnny Turnridge, if you can, from Moses. Start your question, please.
Okay. So violence is increasing, particularly in urban areas around the state of Michigan. What is your plan on how to reduce this social ill in our state?
Well, as I talked about, I have been working on some of these issues over the past couple of years. In fact, I just hosted an event, which, which was a town hall, which talked about the African-American males in crisis, and, and the link between that and the juvenile justice system. The important thing to recognize is that children do not, young people do not, they're not born angry and violent. And so my goal is to ensure that we have support resources where we can find them in their own schools and in their own community to help serve them.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hampton.
Well, as a community leader, president and founder of the Hampton Community Group, the main focus is to increase the community involvement. I have hosted community meetings to try to get our neighbors aware of what's going on to keep, to try to keep everyone safe. I also encourage the communication to the NPO officers, and hosting meetings and trying to increase funding for public safety is part of my goal.
Thank you. Mr. Mohammed.
Yes, as President of Grandmont Mobile Patrol, Chairman of Security for a number of years, also a member of the Crime Advisory, Chief Craig, City Camp for Gang Members, and also 26 patrols in the city, I would start there. Observable actions are very critical. When we see the bad guys, they see us, they leave. So the front line, mobile patrols and security, and also meetings to develop, training is extremely important.
Thank you. As a state representative, I would fund public safety to make sure that we have the manpower, the technology, and the resources to combat crime.[1778.31]